I'd like to call our second August school meeting to order. We'll be starting with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, secretary please note the role. Tino Mattiari is out of town on business, so that's our only access. I'd like to note that we had an executive session immediately prior to the meeting to discuss possible legislation and a previous executive session on August 19th to discuss personnel. Next item of business is public comment. Anybody wishing to speak to the board this evening? Do you have any questions?
No, sir.
Nothing? Nobody out there? Anyone volunteers? Still none. So hurtful. All right. So we'll go next to item number four, presentations, recognitions, and awards. Do you have anything you'd like to tell us this evening?
Yes, sir, I do.
Stand up.
I just wanted to share with the board first day presentation and our welcome back and just have the opportunity to share some of the themes that we've shared with our staff. I had an opportunity to work with our administrative staff the week before and focus our thoughts on the upcoming school year and then I had an opportunity to address the entire district last week. So I just wanted to share with you briefly some of the highlights of that particular day and what we talked about. I'd also like to thank Mr. Leach for coming and welcoming the staff. He did an excellent job. His words were very authentic, which, you know, when you're authentic, it definitely gets a positive vibe and rise out of the ground. He did an excellent job along with that, so I want to thank you for that. You're very well received. So today we started with our welcome back and one of the things that I always stress when I meet, have an opportunity to meet 500 people once time is to thank them for the work that they do, not only to get the school year ready, but also what they do throughout the entire year. So you can see the groups that I recognized that particular day, excuse me, the custodial maintenance grounds, the tech staff, faculty and their support staff, the directors and our administrators, our administrative assistants who are in our buildings, our district office, and our facilities. And I always use the Maxwell quote, "Without these groups, we travel alone." We could not do it in our district without these people supporting us and supporting our kids. Obviously, we talked about the welcome back and really we talked about, as I just mentioned, that Pottsgrove special team of people and that was the group that I tied it back into when I moved to this slide. I always like to refocus on our mission statement and mission of the Pottsgrove School District, to educate and inspire all students to excel as productive, responsible citizens and lifelong learners. Every day I think it's important that we remember this particular goal as we walk into the classrooms. I make that reiteration, if you will, you know, with our staff and really with everybody in the district because everybody that works for us has a role in our mission statement. So from this point, what I'm going to do is just, you know, and what I have up here is our highlights and accomplishments that have occurred since the fall of 2016 to the fall of 2019. The highlights that are in bold are the ones that we've accomplished this past 18, 19 school year. And we break it down into department and this curriculum, the data assessment and integration department, two highlights that came most about. And again, I'll say this upfront, as a board, you need to take pride in these accomplishments because this board has had something to say in everything that we've done for the last three years. And you'll see the end slide where you'll see how many things we've accomplished and focused on over that period of time. But the curriculum review teams, we finished off social studies this past year. We had after distinguished schools again at the middle school and high school for the next three years. We also, the big highlights, you know, which was a vision of the boards, was French at our middle school and high school and then exploratory programs in Spanish, German, and French. That was a huge accomplishment that we're all very proud of here. In the co-curricular department, excuse me, you see some of the things that we've accomplished over the last three years. And you'll see like 16 to 18 or 16 to 19 or 17. That means it was a three-year process or a two-year process or possibly an ongoing process with our co-curricular initiatives and our trainings. Also, the people service department, these are the pieces that have been looked at this year as some new pieces and have taken place for the last three years. And it even goes even further with these in bold where we have 339 planning this year as something that was accomplished, the ATS I planning, evidence-based academic interventions, crisis counselor, the expanding the technology part for our assisted students and the assistants. And of course, our SAP with creative health has been improved, stop the violence grant, Pottstown Health Wellness has continued to move forward, and the B-STAG threat assessment out of Virginia Tech has been something that that department has worked on. Technology and networking infrastructure, you see the things that have been accomplished with this department over the last three years. And when you move ahead, some of the things that the technology has, department has done with, has been with gaggle, ClearPass, a lot of online security, carts for grades two and three, upgraded Power School and the laptop buyback program. From here, we take a look at our facilities and operations. We've done an excellent job maintaining our facilities. You can see some of the things that we've done throughout the district and at the district office, which has led us to some things that have occurred this year with the installation of middle school bridge, the restoration of tennis courts and track, ongoing but soon to be done, upgraded fume hoods in our labs, developed emergency and security maps, and upgraded the HVAC and controls at Lower. So really quite a few really important accomplishments that have been taken care of. And again, I share this with the entire staff and because obviously everybody in that room first day had a part in this process. Maintain the integrity of the instructional programs and co-curricular activities. The business department has, you know, Dave and his crew have allowed us and Ron have allowed us to maintain everything for the last three years. In fact, we even added, you know, French as a program. So what an accomplishment and at the same time still keeping the tax rate very respectable of our community. The community relations pieces, you can see a lot of things happened there this year as a new, right out of the gate with the education foundation, the co-curricular initiatives, the first academic hall of fame, our athletic teams had six championships in their division, middle school and high school PIA double A sportsmanship award for the last two years. We hope, we hosted an opioid awareness seminar for a weekend here last spring. We rebranded the district, which a lot of you had part in that. We produced the annual district report and increased the district's presence, you know, with digital and social media. So again, a lot of you had pieces of that. Safe school partnerships, which really kicked off in 2017, 18, continued with district-wide security camera upgrades, our intruder and evacuation drills, our suicide awareness training, district-wide safety assessment and the Safe to Stay rollout all took place last year. So when you take all those slides and you add them all up, what's it look like? So from 2016 to 19, there were 98 highlights and accomplishments that you as a board had part in. This past year, there were 37. So I mentioned all those things to our staff and our support staff and our custodial maintenance and really, you know, congratulate them on a job, job well done. We continue to talk and you've seen this before from me, I really think the foundations for success, we continually have our administrators talk about these components and with their building staffs, you can see them there. You know, the biggest thing here I think that sticks out for the board and for myself is the fostering of collaborative progress. So I mean, I think we do a really good job with that piece and I think our administrators and our teachers do a great job with the last one there, leave no student, parent, or colleague behind. I think, not that we don't do set high standards or emphasize responsibility, safety, respect, we do, but you know, those are some of those things for me highlight the things that we do well as a board and our administrators and staff do well also. We talked about making connections with one person at a time. Not only do I do this in front of the big group, but I also will go back to the buildings in September and reemphasize some of these highlights. We want our teachers to talk to people in person. We want people at a phone, an email, and we always talk about a culture change and building trust over the years. One of my pet peeves and our people know this and they do an excellent job with structured detail and follow-through. They understand how much we can support them if they do have structures in place. They pay attention to detail and they follow through. So we continually stress those key points for all of our staff members, whatever their role in the district is. And I always talk to them a little bit about the history, the first year that we got together in 16, we talked about every day and we tied that into a song and lyrics about how important a teacher is in the life every day of a student, the impact and responsibility and the power that they have every, you know, every day when they have an opportunity to meet with children. In 17, we talked about calling all teachers, you know, every student needs a sign to let them know they're there and we all, we talked about our relationships and no learning occurs without a significant relationship. So again, the theme of how important it is to get to know our students, building those relationships, building those bridges. Last year, as you're all aware, we talked about the 212, the extra degree. What more could we do, not only for ourself as an individual, but for our faculty, for our students, for our families? And that really, you know, our administrative team did a really good job promoting that. This year, our focus, we're going to continue to focus on instructional practices that improve individual student achievement. That is always paramount, that's not going to change. We're going to continue to focus on a data review process and the analytic framework for measuring growth and closing the achievement gap. They've been one and two for the last three years. They're not changing. It's an ongoing process for us and we have to continually get better and that's why they really rank so high. Number three, understanding the principles of behavior to build successful classrooms. I think you've heard a lot in the last year, you know, about, you know, behaviors with our students in our classes and in our schools. So we want to give this, our teachers, the tools they need to continually have, build those relationships, have an understanding of those behaviors and really help our students at a grassroots level. So that'll be ongoing professional development this year and also improving our schools through teacher voice and agency. The board last year supported us in getting the My Voice piece in. That has kicked off. We're in a process of basically circling back to that in the beginning of school and we'll have more information as that moves forward here in September. But building level teams have been established, they're focused on individual goals for their buildings based on that information that they got from that collaborative, the 10 collaboration pieces within buildings. So we'll hear more about that in the next couple of weeks. And then the theme for this year is we talked about lead simply. What does lead simply mean? Lead simply means this, we're asking our teachers to model, model the behavior you want to see. We're asking them to connect with people that they lead or teach and we're going to ask them to involve them as much as possible. And for my administrators, I ask them to do that with their staffs. For the teachers, I ask them to do that with their students. The lead simply piece administrated, we had a day and a half of lead simply workshop, if you will. I led that with administrative staff to, or the administrative staff and district office staff and had an opportunity to share this with everybody and to really, their goal now is to take that back to their building and get back to us, get back to me as far as, you know, what that looks like in their building, how they're going to model for their staffs, how they're going to connect and involve them. So just wanted to thank you for viewing that, sort of bringing you up to speed and how we kicked off the year and any questions, comments?
Thanks very much. I appreciate you giving that overview. That was very good. I think that was terrific. I'd like to ask Mr. Leach, you were there for the opening day, just your impressions of how everything went and what you thought?
It was very nice. I did actually, Dr. Shirk stole my thunder a little bit because in the corner, by accident, in the corner is where all our room shirt, maintenance, groundskeepers, facility people, they always try to hide and I was going to point them out, but he stole it from me. So I didn't get to say that because they're obviously a very important piece of the school district that gets overlooked a lot and I wanted to make sure that they knew how important they were as well. And the rest, everybody was very happy, very energetic. It looked like everybody was just raring to go.
Well, one of the things that, themes that we've had here around this table a couple of times is we've, as you mentioned, we've done this the past couple of years. We talk at the beginning of the year, the things that we've accomplished and it's a good opportunity for us to sort of recap what we've accomplished in the previous years. And at the end of each year, sort of in May, June, Mr. Parker always says, you know, we were looking for that kind of recap and we tend to get it in August as opposed to getting it at the end of the year. And one of the things that we as a board talked about a couple of times was, wouldn't it be nice if we got some of this information through the year? And I had a discussion in the middle of last year with Mr. D'Renzo and he said, "I write all this stuff down and I give it to Dr. Shirk. Why aren't you looking at the stuff that I write for you?" And so that I kind of put the several thoughts together, Mr. D'Renzo, and I've got a tasking for you that we've all kind of come to and we're going to be calling on you at different board meetings to give us some update, the good news, Pottsgrove kind of thing at regular board meetings. It's not going to spring it on you too much, other than right this minute.
Right now.
But we're going to be asking you for some of the, some of the good news things, things that are going on around the district in your role as the director of all things other stuff in the district. And just an opportunity for you to talk about all the things that are happening throughout the district that are not strictly related to the normal course of our business. That gives you a chance to talk about all the great things that are happening throughout the district that might not come up as a normal course of our business. Give you more of a talking role and give you a chance to brag some. So if you wouldn't mind helping us out with that, we'd sure appreciate it. All right? Thanks very much.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to item five, we pour the superintendent. At our last meeting, we had an opportunity to have opening discussions, if we will, regarding the GPS monitoring system for our bus fleet. Mr. Nestor has additional information for discussion tonight that he'd like to share with the board.
Thank you, Dr. Shirk. Just wanted to give an overview for the couple of people that weren't here last time. Over the summer, we, in conjunction with CMD, solicited quotes for GPS location services for our buses. There was a couple of reasons for that, one of them being we think we can maximize our subsidies by capturing the most accurate mileage that we do in an annual situation, which is a large component of our transportation subsidy. But in addition to that, we think this is something that would provide more customer service to our families, more safety and security for our kids and knowing where our buses are at all times and things like that. So we solicited quotes from three vendors, vendors that worked in close communication with our track, our transportation software, our routing software. Two of those vendors responded, one did not, to our request for proposal. So CMD representatives and I sat down and we had meetings with each of the vendors, identified the cost structures, determined what needs we had and which ones could meet that. And we identified Eagle Wireless as the lowest responsible bidder, the lowest price for what we thought we needed. And we were going for a base level at this point in time. We're not looking for the Cadillac. We wanted just to know where they are and to track the information. At our last meeting, we had a lot of discussion about the cost of installation of the Geotab system by Eagle Wireless. So I went back to the vendor and asked him some pointed questions and had him respond to me. I provide you copies of their emails back to you, which discuss the amount of time involved in the installation process. It also includes a further reduction in cost because they're motivated, they really want to work with us, they want to build a relationship with us. And they also point out, if you look down at the bottom, that their installation is warranted for a year, where ours would not be if we chose to do it on our own. And I just want to point out, when we typically introduce new technologies to the district, we typically utilize the experts in the field to do the installation. We don't, if we handed this off to our staff or even to CMD's staff, they haven't done it before. So there's an economy of scale, if you will, having the expert do it. That being said, I went back to our quotes that I had because I didn't have all the information with me when we spoke last time. Our quotes were from two different vendors, Zonar and Eagle Wireless. We looked at the cost of installation between the two. They were very similar. Zonar had quoted on 50 units, we're actually looking at 56 units. So when I expanded that, the cost, it was $11,317. Eagle Wireless was $10,304. However, based on the reductions they proposed in the email, that would bring the cost of installation down to $8,288, which would bring the cost of installation and material down to $15,002. We see a number of benefits from this. We provide enhanced driver supervision. We'd be able to see where drivers are, what, not necessarily what they're doing, but if they're idle for too long of a period of time, we can see that. We can see if they exceed speed limits by five miles an hour or 10 miles an hour, whatever key we set in there, or if they exceed speed limits by, for a period of time, certain period of time. We can do all kinds of metrics and I would be involved with those discussions when we set those metrics up to capture them. We have improved data accuracy. As I said, mileage is a big component of our transportation subsidy. I did, I brought a copy of the calculation here. It's a 13-page calculation to get our transportation subsidy. And there's probably a lot of calculations that are behind those calculations. So it's very complex, probably the most, it's probably even more complex than the basic education subsidy. But mileage with students onboard versus mileage without students onboard is the primary component. And I did some estimates today based on our last year subsidy. We got $1,062,000 in transportation subsidy and I'm projecting about $760,000 of that is directly from mileage-related calculations. So even if we were able to improve our mileage components by 1%, that would save $7,600 a year. And we couldn't go down because right now we're taking an estimate, we're guessing on which day of the month we're going to have the best scenario. So unless we guessed right 10 times, we're going to get, we're going to get better results. It couldn't be less. Even if we, even if that was the best day, we couldn't do better than that. So we'd have improved customer service to our staff and students and I can, I can give you a couple of examples just yesterday. I was down at Lower for the morning and the afternoon runs yesterday. Had my laptop so I could see what kids were on what bus and things like that, but a bus was late. I could have called up the GPS system and could have determined where they were and approximately how far it would be until they got here. Also, in the morning, there was a woman waiting at Lower when I got there. She was waiting for her child to get off her bus. The bus didn't come, didn't come. She was there for a half hour. She was there for 45 minutes. Bus didn't come. I finally went over and started talking to her, found out what bus it was. It was there and gone before she even got there. But she was, you know, she was getting pretty anxious because her child hadn't gotten to school yet. So we could have alleviated that just by going on and seeing when they stopped at Quick identification of where buses are located in emergency situations. Last year, we had a pop-up storm on a Friday afternoon. Sometimes because of events going on on the bus, the driver can't communicate to the depot or the depot can't communicate with the driver because of volume on the bus. We would know where the bus was, even if the driver couldn't communicate it to us. And like I said, ability to maximize our subsidies. So with that being said, wanted to open up for any more questions you have and determine whether or not this is something the board feels comfortable with moving forward with.
First I think you answered all my questions since I'm last week. Thanks.
All right, so I'll say since I wasn't here last week, the initial...
And probably was asked, the initial money that's going to go out, is that coming from capital, correct? Not the monthly, not the yearly, the initial?
No, we can, it's board discretion, or we can use part of the transportation equipment budget to fund it. So we can, we can decide that at whatever point, or market street money.
Can they advertise his names on the bus?
And the second question is, I know there is obviously some discussion about we'll know where the buses are. And you said that the one parent would then be able to have the, you know, we would be able to solve that issue. But if you weren't there, the parent would not have been able to solve that issue. So how, were the parents, are you expected to get a bunch of phone calls from parents? Because I know on Facebook, as soon as it's five minutes passed due, they're, so are you going to get flooded with phone calls or are you going to allow the parents to actually see things?
I don't believe this system has the ability to offer parent access to it. I think that's the, an upgraded portion of the product. But if, it would be, it would be much better if we had the ability, even now, when I get a phone call from somebody who says my bus is late or the bus didn't pick up my child, I can't prove that they, where, I can't identify where it's at, nor can I prove that it was there. So we have to rely a lot on the driver's comments that they did or didn't and, you know, without having something to point to and say, you know, according to the fact that the bus arm opened at 7:31 today, the bus was there and on the time and you must have missed the bus. Or ma'am, I just called up your child's bus and they're two stops away, they should be there in about five minutes. Right now, I just have to say, ma'am, I'll look into it and I'll try and get back to you. So I'm calling CMD. So I'm calling CMD, they're calling the bus driver, and by the time that all happens, they're usually home. So it'd be nice to be able to answer the, the customer's question when they ask it. And it doesn't have to be just me. This is a web-based program, so whomever we, we provide access to, it would be my secretary, it would be Ron, CMD will have it, you know, we'll, we'll develop a plan on who all should have, have access to it, should a, should an issue occur.
Yeah, I was just going to thank you, Dave, for all your work, your hard work into this, and I think this is a, really going to benefit our school district and our children, and really do, and our parents.
I have one last question, is in regards to, I know we are one of the last districts to get this, right? How does this system compare to everybody else has? Are we, are we in the same line? Are we going to be like, you know, I understand this isn't the Cadillac version, but are we at least going to have similar?
You know, some of them, some of the districts have the, the full-blown suite where, you know, a parent can log on to the website and see where their kids are and stuff like that. But in our case, I think we're trying to walk before we run. If we get to the point where we think we need to enhance it and provide other additional services, there are upgrades to, to this that we can implement.
Software upgrades.
Software, to, to get up to it. And it's really, it wouldn't be new pieces of equipment, it would just be buying a higher level of service. So it would be more, an increase in the monthly, monthly licensing fee. But we want to, we want to do it slow, we want to do it right, and then if we feel there's a need for improvement, we'll go from there.
What about after hours? You know, football team's getting home at 11 o'clock at night or something? Is somebody willing to still be awake and next to their computer in case they get a call? I mean, in that case, I would think, you know, most of the, if it's a sports team, most of those kids are going to have cell phones. But at the same time, if we're saying that this is part of the reason to have it, is so that we can tell the parent instantaneously that little Johnny is 10 feet away from their So we got to know that everyone's all in, and, and that either it's someone at CMD, someone here, someone wherever.
I think what we'll do is, we'll make sure that the list of folks who have access to it will be worked with the extracurricular and the athletic director so that the list is broad enough that we'll have that sort of coverage, so that it won't be just, just, you know, Mr. Nestor and his group. It'll be broad enough so that there will be coverage, so that you don't have to stay up every night when there's a team out until 11 o'clock. Unless, you know, you want that responsibility, in which case you can have it all. All right, good, okay.
Just, just to, just to add, Mrs. Custer, I think one of the things that, that we found out was safe to say was, we had smaller teams that monitored Safe to Say, and we exhausted that group pretty quick, because it was 24/7, seven days a week. So what we, what we learned was, we had to expand that team to include other administrators, and all, almost like, you know, the nursing profession, you know, you have some weekends on and some weekends off. And our, our administrators basically wrapped, wrapped that around and, and really helped that particular thing move forward without really taxing the same people. So I would think that we could, we could put something like that together, where we would have people on call for weekends or, or nights, depending on the schedule, and working with Mr. Anzbach on that piece. But that, that's a good point, Mrs. Custer, and that's something that we'll definitely consider.
One other thing, you mentioned, you know, you can see if a bus is going 5, 10 miles an hour over the speed limit. Is someone actually sitting there watching, getting info from every bus at, you know, real time? Or is that going to be something where, you know, Mr. Smith calls and says, you know, every morning, that bus comes roaring down the road, and then someone goes in and checks bus number six at, you know, 7:05 a.m. or something like that? Is, you know, is that how this is going to work? Or is it going to be a constant monitoring, and they can call out anybody at any time and say, you're going over the speed limit, you blew a stop sign, whatever?
There, there are different means of addressing this. We can get alerts on the system when certain things happen. So if it's, if we set that alert at 15 miles an hour over the speed limit, which we think is way excessive, then we'll get an immediate notification on the screen, and they can, CMD will get that. I won't be watching them all the time, but CMD will have that up all the time. So they, they will get that. But in addition to that, this, the system provides data points throughout the day, every second or two seconds, and that's archived. And we can run reports at the end of a month, or at the end of a week, and look at things that have transpired over the week. So it's one thing if you've gone over the speed limit for some reason, it's another one if you look at it and they're constantly over the speed limit. So we'll be able to, to adjust that as well. So we can get reports on a, on a monthly basis, or bi-weekly basis, bi-weekly basis, whatever, of various pieces of information we want.
Last question.
Oh, sorry. Now you made me lose my train of thought, Al. Oh, oh, so you're saying that we're one of the few left in Montgomery County who doesn't have this? But we're also one of the few that owns our own buses? So these other schools that have the GPS, did they pay for that, even though they don't own the buses? Or was that something that the bus company offered as a service?
Nothing's for free. It's all baked in there. So the contractor may buy it, they may install it, and they may increase their fee associated for the transportation. With, with our agreement with CMD, we're like a cost-plus contract. We pay an administrative fee for their office staff, and we pay for repairs, we pay for our bus, we pay for our gas, we pay for the drivers, we pay for the, the cameras and the GPS. And that has, as I showed last year, that served us well, to be paying just that administrative fee, rather than, you know, a lot of, a lot of transportation companies replace their buses every six years. We get 15 out of our buses, because we can monitor it. When you're dealing with a, a larger transportation company, you may put a mandate in there that they maintain a, a shorter lifespan, just to make sure that they don't have as many breakdowns. But since we have this relationship and we're paying for the repairs, we make sure it's, they're, they're maintained. So we see the cost, some of the other places wouldn't see the cost, but a, you know, a $2 increase in the mileage rate, or a dollar increase in the mileage rate would more than compensate for, for the cost of this.
So was that your roundabout way of saying, you don't really know?
They really, they, everybody pays for it.
Well, I understand, but...
In one way or another.
But I'm just saying, it's, it's not a definite. You don't know for sure that, that the other school districts are being charged more because of the GPS.
My other thing was just simply, when do you bring it to the board for final approval? And what is the schedule going to look like to get the buses retrofitted, once we do?
The reason I had brought it earlier in the summer was because it would have been quicker to get it done when school wasn't in session. We'll have to relook at the schedule, but it shouldn't be more than a couple of weeks to get it, get all of them up and running. Then there'll be a little bit of a learning curve with the software to, to get going. But we'd like to have it operational for an October implementation, if at all possible.
What is the projected life of the hardware that we're going to be physically installing on the buses?
I don't have an answer, I can get that for you.
Chuck, that would be one year and one day. Because we're getting a one-year warranty on it.
But what's the...
That's why I'm saying, it would be one year and one day would be the lifespan. One, I'm just kidding, obviously.
Yeah, yeah, I, I'm wondering what a realistic life would be.
I wasn't here at last meeting, but I support this system, only because I've experienced the use of it. I like the idea that speed and other things can be monitored, and that we would be notified of issues with that. The problem I had with this, and I hope this is considered for future issues that come up, was the last minute being thrown at us at the last meeting. That's the problem I had with it.
Well, it wasn't for action, it was a discussion item last month, as it is again this month.
I thought they wanted to put it in before school started.
He was, he was presenting, it was, it was still a discussion item last month, as it is again this month. He did one, he was hoping, hoping that we would take action on it, but it was still a discussion item, so.
Just discuss.
I'm giving you...
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Nestor, we put this on the agenda for our first meeting in September. Will I give them enough time to, to meet their deadlines for their first mileage test?
I would hope so. Like I said, I'll, I'll reach out to the vendor tonight, or tomorrow, and find out what their, what their schedule looks like, but I think we could do that.
Then what, then what I'd like to do is put this on as an action item for our first meeting in September, and move it, move it forward. Moving on to action item number six.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve action items, action items 6.1 through 6.7.
Second.
You're holding it 6.7, you're not including 6.8?
Not yet.
Okay.
We're going.
All right, 6.1 through 6.7. We have a motion and a second. Does anybody have any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right?
Moving on to item 6.8, miscellaneous employees' compensation rates. I'm asking the board to approve the miscellaneous employee compensation rates as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve 6.8. Does anybody have any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
Very good. We have seven and one, so, so without, or so we're without objection. Next?
Moving on to 6.9, miscellaneous executive administrative salary increases. I'm asking the board to approve the executive administrative salaries increases as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on that item. Does anybody have any questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. So we're without objection.
Moving on to action items for business. We're asking the board to approve the contract with CMD Services for Student Transportation Services for the 1920 school year as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Anybody have any questions or comments?
I had a question.
Please.
In regards to, it says that our transportation costs are among the lowest in the area. Okay, I'm 101 comparison then, as in, do we actually have a comparison of how much we actually pay for our busing services per student versus these other districts that were lower than?
I can present that again, we presented it last year during the budget process.
After the increases.
Well, I don't know what the other places are paying now, we only have historical data.
So these increases, this is a part of the 10% increase that we agreed to, I think, last year, to go over the following, or two years, yeah, for the, whenever we agreed, it was going to be over three years.
It was going to be over three years, this is the third year, and it's only on the management fee component. The other things are just normal annual inflationary increases.
Okay, so we'd be voting for a 3.6% increase in their hourly rate?
That's on, that's if we use their van, which happens occasionally, but it's not the majority of our, of our program. Most of the staff have a 2.4, 2.5% increase.
Will their van be retrofitted for the GPS system as well, or if we use it?
They are planning to, to do that, yes. Just for everyone's understanding, we would only use a CMD van if we had, did not have sufficient equipment of our own.
The CMD van, vans owned by CMD, correct? But since I was asking about the, the GeoTrak thing, whatever it was, whatever it was called, but GeoTab, I think. But they are installing it on their equipment as well, or in addition to us installing a 56, they're installing it on some of their own?
That's correct.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
All right, very well, ayes have it. Next item?
Moving on to sponsorship agreement, 7.2. We're asking the board to approve sponsorship agreement with Michak Physical Therapy for the 1920 school year as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the sponsorship agreement. Are there any questions on that?
Question, but it's not part of the Michak part. Did the tennis courts get refurbished? They were planned to, did they make it?
They were, the tennis in the track were clean. The vendor is behind 35 days due to weather over the summer, so we are scheduled for the end of September, beginning of October.
Is that going to be okay with tennis? All right.
Okay, if we have any other questions, maybe on grounds maintenance or anything? No? Okay, all right. If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, moving on to action items for education.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve eight action items for education.
Eight, we'll approve these.
One through eight for five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve action items for eight one through eight five for conference attendance. All those, are there any questions on any of those action items? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. So we're without objection.
Action items for policy, we're asking the board to approve the revised policies as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the policies as presented, 204, 618, 702, and 702.1. Does anybody have any questions on any of those revised policies?
Yeah. I had a question regarding loans of equipment and such. What happens if, for instance, in the performance of Chitty Chitty Bang Bang, I think we probably borrowed a golf court, now, which was used... I think we probably borrowed a golf court, now, which was used, which played the role of the car. Now, my question is, if we borrow something, how do you, how does that affect the policy regarding gifts, rather than me giving you something outright? I loan you my golf course, or previous year Steel River loaned us lighting equipment. How is that treated?
Fair to Dave, but I don't view that as a gift. I mean, we could sort of parse words over that. I wouldn't suggest it's not in some ways a gift, but it's really the loan, or what lawyers would call a bailment, which means you're lending something to somebody, and you have an obligation to return it. So, I, I haven't read the policy, Chuck, but I don't, so maybe you want to be more specific, but I don't see it as a problem, per se.
Well, would, would policy 702 apply to a bailment?
I think not. It's a gift, grant, or a donation. Again, we could, certainly you can make an argument that somebody lends you something, in some ways that's a gift, because they didn't charge your rental, or whatever, or so, but I think for our purposes, where we've always interpreted to be that a bailment is different than a gift, or, or, you know, a donation.
If it's different than a gift, then what policy governs bailments? Because one of the things in policy 702 is things like acknowledgement of the-
Well, I mean, certainly if we want to treat it that way, we can.
She's, we have, we have two options, I think. Option one is, we remove policy 702 from the motion. Option two is, we approve the motion with a provision that 702 be reviewed to ex, to, pending a review, that bailments are not included, that it doesn't apply.
I think what we need to decide as a board, 702 doesn't address loans and-
Right.
Or bailments, or anything to that effect. It addresses gifts, grants, and donations, as in other words, a permanent action that was done.
Right.
That's something that's temporary. So, we could certainly review this if the board feels, and I would look to Mark for his advice, that we need a policy to address when something is, is loaned. I don't see that need personally, but if it's advisable-
Yeah. As you suggested, it's up to the board. I mean, I'm glancing at the policy, and it has multiple purposes. One of the, it seems the major purposes are the inventory, the gift, to acknowledge it, and, and that type of thing. You don't really need the inventory, the card, because you're going to give it back in a couple of days. So, the, the policy, I don't believe was meant to cover that. I mean, the only thing you might want to do, I don't think you need a policy to do this, you certainly can, is if someone lends you something, certainly you'd want to acknowledge it like you do a gift, and, you know, it's just good behavior, you know, hopefully we have those good manners, so I'd only suggest to the administration, Bill, if we have something we want to acknowledge, or Dave, we simply acknowledge it and do it with anybody else.
Yep.
So, the, the short answer is, I don't think the policy's meant to cover that, and I don't, it's up to the board. I don't know we have to have a policy for that.
All right. So, what I would say is that we, we approve these, these policies as they are, and we bring up the idea of loans as a separate issue to the committee to consider.
I have one more question in regards to this policy.
Is that acceptable to you?
Yeah, I, I agree with what you're saying.
Okay. Go ahead, with your second question.
Just, I wasn't sure if this included the Booster Club and the Music League, if they're giving gifts to the sports facilities, or giving gifts to the music department.
I believe it would, because they are not separate legal entities, they are still under your umbrella, so it's, it's materials that come to you.
So, if the, let's say the Booster Club said they wanted to give the track $500 to new shoes, that the board could actually say, no, we want to use that $500 for something else?
Well, I don't know you could say it for some, but you, you know, you can't take the gift and use it for something that donor designates anyone otherwise, but you don't ever have to take a gift, and I think that's partly why the policy's on here. I know that, and I'm, this is not meant to make an argument one way or the other, or an editorial comment, I know there was a district that refused a gift from the NRA not too long ago, that I'm aware of, one of the districts we represent. So you always have that, that, that option out, and that's, I think, partly why there's a policy, because, you know, frankly, you don't need a policy, but it says that it shall become district policy, and therefore, even if the Booster Club wants to give a gift, the board may not agree with the purpose. I mean, sometimes, and I don't want to get off on a long tangent-
Yeah.
Yeah, there's feelings by a board that the gifts to, and this is maybe not a Booster Club issue, but a gift to one elementary school from a PTO favors one's more affluent elementary school geographic area over another, so that's why we have these gift policies.
Any other questions? All right. Any other questions? All right. All those in favor of approving these revised policies, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
We're saying no as it's written.
Very good. Motion carries. Action item, section 10 miscellaneous.
Appointment of student board rep. We're asking the board to approve Pots Grove High School junior class member Madison Palma to serve as a school board representative for a two-year term, ending in June 2021.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, you're not alone anymore. You've got a teammate again.
If I can just ask a question-
You'll have to move one seat down, though, yeah? Okay.
Bob, can I just ask, did Madison know that she was being appointed tonight? Was it communicated with her that she was going to be, her position was going to be voted on tonight?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Just curious.
Moving on to number 11, committee items. We're asking the board to accept the policy, board committee meeting held on June 11th, 2019, as submitted.
We have a motion and a second to accept the minutes of the policy committee meeting held on June 11th, 2019. Are there any questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. So with one objection. Two items of new business? You said a couple.
New, new business, yeah, if I may. I'm sure the board has heard about the, the flexible instructional day program that the state offered school districts. I received information on flec, of those flexible days, July 31st, and when I had the opportunity to look at it, my thoughts were that there was a lot of work to be done in a very short period of time to have, to have this be board-approved by September 1st. My colleagues around Montgomery County-
September 1st.
So we're, you know, we're trying to get GPS, and so, so with all that being said, the, my colleagues around Montgomery County, basically, who took a brief survey, five out of the 22, 20, 20 districts responded, five basically said, no, they were not participating in flexible spending day. I was one of the 15 that said, I'd like to at least look into it, and see what some of the, you know, the contingency plans are. But to come up with exemplary, and exemplary lessons that tied into technology or what, it was so much to do, and we were coming back to school, obviously, on the 20th, and there was just no way to, to, to do a good job, and be thoughtful about it. So I just wanted to let you know that it was on our radar, we talked about it internally, our goal was to just learn more about it. The superintendent's meeting next, in the week of the 12th, we're going to discuss more about this, so I'll, I'll fill you in as time goes on, if that's something for us or not, moving forward with our, with our, with our kids. And lastly, I just wanted to share quickly that in October, with the Tri-County Chamber of Commerce, we are going to host a college fair and business expo at the high school. So we're excited about that, that we really feel it's an opportunity for us to tie both pieces together, and more information will follow, but I wanted to let you know, we committed our facilities for that, for that particular evening, and I was really excited about that. I, the date, I'm sorry, here, just to put in, Mrs. Bickert, do you know that off the top of your head?
October 24th.
October 24th. Thank you, Mr. Torrenzo. We had, we had a couple of dates we had to work around to make sure that we had everything available, and that, that was today, October 24th. That's all I have. Mr. Linger?
Are there any other items of new business that anybody would care to share? One, okay?
Yeah. This past Saturday was Pots Grove Community Day, and of course, the weather was, I mean, amazingly beautiful, but it was so nice to see all the community, all our athletics, the Lions Club was there, giving free books out, all kinds of fun games for the kids, which was really geared for like kindergarten, preschool, to fifth grade. Everything was free, they had refreshments, hot dogs, and it was just such an amazing day, that just did your heart good to see everybody come together. So, I have to shout out to Sydney Coleman, who whipped this together. I mean, if you ever see her, thank her, because she, she's an up and coming for our district, let me tell you, and our athletic director, Mr. Onsbach, they did an amazing job, and I bet you there was like 60 kids there. It was just beautiful, beautiful day.
Well, thank you very much.
Well, one last thing-
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
I know, and actually, I know, Dr. Harnett's going to take this one.
All right.
So it's not really me, but, last, last, last meeting, we had a discussion regarding the middle school, and being able to have assistance, if you will, to help have some flexibility within the administrative schedule for supervision. So I wanted to have Dr., we had an opportunity to meet with the union leadership the first last week, and I just wanted Dr. Harnett to fill you in about some of our, our, the process.
Thank you, Dr. Shirk. I think we had some real positive developments. When we left here that night and went back, we started to talk about it, we wanted to meet with the union to talk about what our goals were in the entire process, and what we brought to you. And they came to us very open to ideas, they understood, and were very appreciative of what was going on at the middle school, and did want to see that that climate was maintained in the lunchrooms, they felt it was a very positive step that they'd taken, and didn't want to in any way jeopardize that. So we had some really good conversations, we still have more talking to do, but we're looking at working through the structure of the contract now, but with some creative ways to maybe get some of professional assistance in that cafeteria to really keep things moving forward. So, talking about Dr. Shirk in the beginning, about our fostering of a collaborative process, that was about as picture-perfect an example of that as you could have, it was a really positive meeting, and we appreciated the union leadership for everything they brought to the table, and their understanding of, of what we were trying to accomplish. So, more to come, but right now, we're still talking about possible ways to, to enhance that within the, the structure of the, of the contract.
I'm happy to hear that. If this was discussed last meeting, I apologize, I wasn't able to attend, but is there any, I was disappointed that there's no training given to the aides, I was reminded tonight in our notes here, that even the drive, bus drivers are wisely given training in behavior management. Is that not something that would be wise for the luncheon maids duty? I think duty aides might get it, too, to receive.
Yeah, we talked a lot about that, actually, as an administrative team. We do offer quite a bit of training. Most of the days that training is available, those folks are not on the clock, we can look to pay them, that could be at quite an expense, but we did talk about things that we could do to improve that. Some of the areas that we really couldn't improve, we didn't think through training, was just the, the overall authority, and we did talk about that a little bit at, at the meeting, but your point is well-taken, that, that there's things that we can do, we need to look at doing it in a cost-effective way, though, because, as I said, most of the time, when we do provide training, those folks are not, are not working, but it's a good point, and I think we're going to look at, at ways to possibly give them some more support in that area.
Okay, so before we go to the last public comment and adjournment, I'd just like to tie everything back up together. We talked about the, back to our opening ceremony, and, and getting everything back together, we talked about the leading simply, we talked about having, everybody having a voice, and, and getting back to all the things we talked about, and the accomplishments that we've made, and some of the steps that we've taken here, some of the accomplishments that we've made, and things that we've done here to give everybody a voice. We've recently started having the board representatives, the student representatives, and I think that's worked very well, to have them not only he, sitting here and, and working with us, but also going out into the district, and, and to the various schools, and talking with the students, and bringing those, those things back here to us. I think that we have worked with our administration, the administration's worked with the union leadership, and you've seen that, what I think is a, not only with the early bird contract that we got, but also this most recent example of the union leadership, and the teachers and the staff, working with us, and us working with them, to resolve what could have been a much more difficult solution to a problem that really needed solving, and frees up our administrators to do the things that they need to be doing, and doing their work. A collaborative resolution to a thing, a simple, common sense resolution, and working with our coordinator, our, our, our community relations to get things done, working with the community for our weekend. These are all things that are happening because we're starting to work together much better, I think, as a district and as a community, and that's, I think, to all of our credit. And I'm just happy to see it happening, I'm glad to be a part of it, and I hope that everybody else is, and I hope everybody's taking joy in that, some satisfaction. It's long overdue, and I'm, I'm glad to be among you all and working on it. So, that's all I have to say for tonight, and, yes, ma'am?
Football night, maybe just an hour, just not for that. Want to say it?
I'm sorry?
Let me get an announcement for that.
Please.
I'm sorry to do this last minute. Just a reminder, this Friday night, the football game, we will be honoring all of our military and first responders.
Do we have any people who wish to have any public comment? All right. If not, motion to adjourn will be in order. Second, all those in favor signify by saying aye, and thank you all for playing.